Resolution. Give me that hummin' noise. That's all I heard.
All right.
Good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the August 26th School Board Meeting. I'd like to start with the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have any other revisions to our agenda?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So summary of non-public actions from August 12, 2015. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of July 20, 2015, as written. Mrs. Quintana, second. The motion carried, 5-0-0. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of July 22, 2015, as written. Mrs. Quintana, second. The motion carried, 5-0-0. And Mrs. Lepore made a motion to accept the nomination of Jean...
Schrakwizer.
Schwat... I'm sorry.
Schrakwizer.
Schrakwizer, sorry. As Science Teacher of CHS for salary of $61,482 for the 2015-16 year. Mr. York, second. Motion carried, 5-0-0. You have no presentations or recommendations? Correspondence?
Don't believe we had any.
We had one today, I believe. Today or yesterday? From the Historic Society?
Oh, let me open it up then. I don't think I saw it coming.
They're looking for the use of the building at GMS, the old building?
For their...
For the rug and...
Art show.
Have we been over that a few times?
No, this is their... they do a weekend show, I think, in October.
Oh, so now they're looking for a historical building.
And we just need to approve it.
The usage of it. Oh, yeah, there it is. Came in this morning.
Yeah.
Did you want us to consider that and approve it? If so, then we should probably read the email into the record. On the gist of the email and then...
I have it right here. Do I read it?
Yep.
It's "Good Day." It's well, it's from Gail Behringer. Says, "Good day. I am writing on behalf of the members of the Litchfield Historical Society. We are planning a community event in October, either the 17th or 18th, joining the fire department in an open house day, bringing the community together for varied activities. We would like your permission to use the two original Griffin Memorial School rooms to display Litchfield art and the restored Grange Hall rape. We anticipate that we would open from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on one of these two days. We held an art show at the school during the town's 275th birthday celebration, and the townspeople were appreciative of the opportunity to view art created by our residents. We are hopeful that you will allow the Historical Society to provide this cultural opportunity for our citizens. Sincerely, Gail Behringer, Vice President, Litchfield Historical Society."
I thought there was an issue the last time that they wanted to use it. We ended up bringing the rug here to the high school.
I thought it was... There was... they wanted to do it permanent. Wanted to do it permanently, hanging it on the wall in there. And their issues were that the building didn't meet...
Code.
Safety code, fire code.
Fire code.
Yep. For long-term use. But we have approved in the past them using...
For a short-term...
For a short-term for an art show.
I just remembered a couple of years ago, as far as the rug, it had to be brought here for that.
It did. It couldn't stay permanent.
So is it okay to use it for a one-time only?
Yeah. Yeah, you're okay at one time. I think the fire department's issue that if it became the criminality of it to be here, this is a couple of...
I'll make a motion to allow the Historical Society to use the old GMS portion of the building for their weekend show.
Second. Is there any other... is there anything in there right now? Is it going to cause problems with cleaning it out or... do you know?
I don't know, but I think the answer probably is there shouldn't be an issue. And if there was anything that we need to, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, they do it every year, I believe, so it's not... somewhat anticipated.
Any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 4-0-0.
Yep.
Rule of draft minutes from August 12, 2015?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Oh, second. Further conversation? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Community forum? Here or none?
Superintendent comments?
Mr. Chair, I just have two things I'd like to talk about. In our admin team meeting this week, there was some discussion about more students coming into our district than what we had anticipated. And towards that end, I did take a look at the current numbers that we have in our schools. And clearly, the middle school and the high school does have a higher number at this point in the summer than what we had anticipated due to new students coming in. And certainly, in terms of developing our budget, we will have to take a look at this and keep our eye on the actual enrollment. The elementary school right now is hard to really predict because of the half-day pre-K and K programs. We don't have those fully populated to know how many children we have. However, in the middle school, last year we had a total of 457 students, and this year we have two more, 459 students at this point in time. And at our high school, at Campbell, last year we had 495 students at the end of the year, and currently we're anticipating 522 students. I would give us a bit of a caution in that these are very tentative numbers, and I would hope that we would wait until the end of September when we have more historical data on numbers and also the October 1 are the official numbers that we need to have. But as we develop budgets, we should be aware that we are seeing more students coming into our district than what we had anticipated, and it may have an impact long-term on planning.
Good thing we can cut a grade four teacher.
No, you're still fucking like 79, whatever.
No, grade four went up, looks like five, six kids.
Was it, what, 99 was the problem? Those were in the bubble? They wanted to cut a fourth grade teacher?
Right. It was 100 at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Grade five took a while, too.
I thought they did cut that teacher. They did. We added that back.
We added that.
Yeah, the cohorts in, you know, your lower elementary school are still somewhat below the cohort numbers in the middle and high school. I think we'll have to see how that played out. The real estate market has clearly improved over the last six months, and the economic market seems to be getting better. Certainly, if we have more families moving in, more construction going on, it could impact how our enrollment looks over the next five to 10 years.
What was grade five and six last year?
Last year, grades... grade five in September was 103, and grade six in September was 118.
So both those numbers went up?
No, grade six was 114 right now.
Yeah.
And they were 103. And grade six was 116, or 118 now, it's 120, so because they're now grade seven.
Right, but I'm just looking grade for grade.
Right. So they...
I know the budget committee was...
I don't remember... I don't have a remember budgeting 130-plus kids in the high school for three out of the four grades. We had that as... We had that... we didn't have it at that number. We didn't have it growing to 522. I think we were under 500. Yeah, we were. So that's a... It's a huge jump. Well, you were saying earlier that there was a big jump in the high school.
Again, I just...
Again, the grade nine coming in is much bigger than it was last year.
Early, right? It's early. Not October 1st.
We've got... we know the kids that are coming in because they registered with us. What we don't know is if some kids don't show up on that first day. So I think we really have to say it looks like we got more kids based on what the principals are seeing right now, but we really have to wait until we have the kids in the buildings and in the programs.
But at least, or approximately 25...
Yes.
Just from grade nine coming in.
Yes.
A logic class.
And obviously, if that is a trend, an emerging trend, it will make a significant difference on how we budget for the future.
Yep.
The other piece, if that's all set? The other piece I'd just like to talk about is that we had all of our teachers in this week. I thought we had an excellent start of school. We had a great assembly. I have to tell you that the practice of celebrating all of our teachers who have five, 10, 20 years of experience was just a wonderful tradition. I was really, really quite proud to represent the school up front, and it really was well-received. I thought the teachers were excited. I thought a lot of energy was in the room. And subsequent to that, I've seen the same thing in some of the buildings I've tried to get into. I'm really, really excited. We're going to have the kids come in next week. And like I always say, the best day of the year is the first day that all the children come into school. The second-best day of the year is when all the teachers come into school. But schools aren't schools until we have children in them and teachers and learnings going on. But I thought we were off to a very nice start, and I'm really looking forward to the year.
Any school board comments?
Just a couple. I mentioned Dr. O'Neill about an article in the union leader on Monday in the editorial section about adequacy aid again, and the fact that the town of Dover, City of Dover, is suing the state on the other side of Claremont. Claremont said they didn't get enough money for the kids they had. Now Dover's saying, "We have so many more kids, we're not getting our appropriated amount." And there was a meeting in Concord about this information. But this is something that as a school board, we need to... we need to be very in tune to that process because as a district, we're not... we don't fall well in their formula as it is written today, and which could have a drastic impact on the amount of adequacy aid our town would receive, which would then impact what our tax rates would be and the amount of money that is necessary to run the schools, even with increased of student population and stuff like that. So I mentioned it, Dr. O'Neill, he's going to try to find the article if he can. I'll dig out the paper and get it to him next week. He'll have that, and he can follow up on behalf of the school board. But in this case, two school board representatives from Wyndham actually went and were representing their district in that. And that may be something that, as this is moving forward, that our school board may need to get active in that same process to make sure we're fully heard on the issue because, like I said, we're not well-represented in the formula. The other thing is, as I was, and I know we have it later on in there, but as I was reviewing the bus schedule and the fact that... A couple of things. One, we have all the kids dropped off at the high school about 6:55 in the morning for school that doesn't start till 7:35, of which we now, all the kids have then come into the school. At the middle school, the kids are arrive at the school anywhere starting from 7:20. And the ones that don't take the bus, their parents drop them off, depending on their schedule, anywhere starting as early as 7 o'clock. And those kids have to stand outside in the cold till 7:30 because we don't allow them in the building. And the fact that we have the hour issue with days and hours, that I believe that the superintendent should begin a conversation with the administrative team. And the district as a whole should begin a conversation because in our next contract, it should be something that we need to remedy, not do the contract. But we should begin to look at whether or not we need to adjust the starting times of our schools, better allow access to the schools of the students in a timely fashion. And/or... It doesn't flow well how it is set up today. It just flows. And if we're going to try to go from a day process to an hour process in our next contract, then we're going to need to... We're going to need to fix in our minds as a school board and the citizenry as a whole of what we're going to do. There's plenty of arguments that say middle school and high school shouldn't start till 8:30 at the earliest, and elementary school could start 7:30, quarter of 8 because they tend to be the ones that are early risers and stuff. However, that all needs to be vetted out through the process. But I believe it needs to begin to happen with our administrative team. And maybe that can be something that, as our principals are coming to us in meetings, instead of just giving us a reading their recap, we've always asked for more, that they can begin, you know, working on that and begin updating the board on how they perceive that. I mean, inevitably, the solution to fixing that is going to be occurred in the most positive ways is if it occurs between the school administration and the teachers. The students will probably be pretty flexible with it, whichever way it goes. And we'll need to have the citizens involved. But we can't wait a year because in a year, we're going to be moving into negotiations. We need to have what our plan would be in place for whatever decisions need to be made so that the process can move forward.
If I'm not mistaken, one of our last meetings with the principals, we did stock conversation as far as ideas about that. So it's not like we're going to stop. You and I said the next time they hear, I think we can probably continue on with that conversation because they've had time to think about it. It's been mentioned at an admin meeting just a couple of days ago that...
I know we're going to be working on goals.
Yep.
And that can be one of the top goals because I think it is something that we need to...
It is. But you brought up a point, John, and I'm just wondering if Superintendent O'Neill can possibly... unless you know the answer right now as to why? Why can't the middle school come into the school, even into the gyms to hang out until school starts? If the high school is allowed to come in and stay warm, I mean, the gym is right there in the entranceway. So you just come in, just go and wait in the gym until your class is ready?
I don't have an answer for you, Mr. Chair.
Right.
I will have an answer for you at the next board meeting.
Yep.
I don't know what's going on. I've run into similar problems previously, but I don't know the specifics of Litchfield. But I'm looking into it, and I will have an answer at our next board meeting.
Either it be the gym, maybe the gym they don't want, you know, because especially during the climate of weather, it all coming in. So go to the CAF, which is right next to the entranceway, too.
Whatever. To have a group of 100 kids or more standing outside during the winter months and...
Yep.
Well, I agree it needs to be investigated and bring you some recommendations, and we'll go from there.
Anything else, Sean?
That is it.
Does anyone else have anything? So Jason, you're up.
I would ask Mr. Chair if we could have Jason and Andrea go one after the other as opposed to somebody in between, and they could leave. They've had long days, and I know they're still working on the service and other things, so that's okay with the chair.
I have a feeling they're attacking each other through conversation.
If somebody would be made, I'll yield the floor to... They're far more important than that at this point in the season.
I just think Frank's conversation is probably going to be about an hour and a half or so.
So last school board meeting, I just wanted to bring to your attention of the server crash that we had at GMS a few weeks back, and why that happened, and the high potential of it happening again. So what we have there is we have quite a few servers, and a lot of them have storage on it. And then we also have virtual desktops as well, which are all sharing the storage. So the SAN is basically this big box full of hard drives that the servers share, the virtual desktops share, and there's some other little database stuff on the backend that happens there. So as the schools expand and the technology needs have been addressed and everything like that, more and more of that storage has been chunked out. And what ended up happening was the storage on the servers were getting beyond the capacity of that storage array. So it couldn't put any more data on it, it just crashed. So it took us a little while to get it back up. A lot of log files and some other things get deleted when the servers go down, so it was enough for everything to come back up. So we were able to bring it back up to find out that we only had 21 gigs free on that SAN. So that's the servers and all the virtual desktops are just sharing only 21 gigs. So we knew that we had a lot of cleanup that needed to be done, and we cleaned a lot of it up, and we freed up about an extra 300 gigs or so on that. Even beyond that, even the past couple of weeks, we freed up some more space on that as well. So we just want to bring to your attention that it's getting to absolute maximum capacity. And the potential of that crashing again, that means that there's going to be no internet, people can't get to their network drives, people won't be able to log in, things of that nature. So looking at ways to remedy, how to fix this. The initial thing is the SAN capacity to add another storage device onto that, and that costs roughly between the realm of $20,000 to $25,000 to do that. They're not cheap. It's pretty expensive. There's a lot of redundancy involved and high-level technology that goes along with that. There's a couple of other options that we can do in the meantime to push this out a little bit longer. The only thing is, it's going to be a problem that will eventually hit, and we won't have any choice but to replace it. But what we can do in the meantime is, right now, at a lot of the schools, we use this thing called roaming profiles where everybody's settings and everything go to them wherever they log in, and all that stuff's stored on the server. So desktop icons, download folder, picture folder, all those types of things, those fill up quite a bit. We can't just delete those. We wanted to make sure that all the teachers were in, that they logged in and loaded their profile on their computer first. So in about a couple of weeks, what we'll do is, we want to inform them, too, of the situation, but we can... we'll be able to free up quite a bit of space doing that as well. Again, it's just temporary. We'll still end up probably hitting that peak, but we just wanted to bring it to your attention so that we weren't at that point where it was beyond the point where we couldn't free up anything else. And we're saying, hey, you know, this money isn't in the budget, and have you guys say, well, why didn't we know about this beforehand and everything like that?
So in a few weeks after you free up some more space?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something that I think you can just monitor on a regular basis?
Correct.
So when you know you're getting a little closer and a little closer?
Yes, exactly, exactly. And the other thing that we can look at, again, it's not necessarily in the budget, but we can replace some of those thin clients with regular desktops, and that can free up. Because right now, because they have a fresh, clean install, another way to free everything up is we wiped them all out and just did the fresh installs, roughly about 50, 55 gigs. So that freed up some space, too. So if we remove those, that frees up some space on the SAN, too. But again, that's added revenue needed to do that as well. So...
So is there... is this an issue for this year?
This is an issue, looking at it, it's probably going to be, if I had to guess the way, you know, trends go, again, this is only my first couple of months in Litchfield, but from the other places I've had, you usually chew up, you know, a few hundred gigs within the first few months. That's when a lot of the content creation's happening, then it gets a little bit stagnant, and then near the end of the school year, you start having a lot more content creation and everything like that. And it only takes a few users that end up downloading huge files if, I know like a lot of times, a trend right now is teachers want to make sure that they have a video to show in their classroom. They don't want to have to worry about buffering and waiting for it during the class, so they'll download it from a site so that they can play at any time. And those can be massive as well, you know, five, six gig files. And if you have those, quite a few of those, it just starts ramping up from there.
Wouldn't that be in their local machine, though? Or does each teacher have a thin client that's stored on the server?
They... technically, the teachers should be storing all of their stuff on the network, on their network folder, but a lot of people do still keep things on their C drive. If they use a thin client, which not a lot of teachers are using thin clients, but there are some, that whole entire thing is just all server storage.
Just if I could go back to Mr. John's question, you kind of like talked about it, but we had talked earlier about your concern about a possible crash again this year.
Right.
And I think we should let the board know that you anticipate that we could easily have another crash this year, and that we may need to try to find some source of money during this year, even though we don't have it budgeted, if we continue to have this kind of an issue. Is that a fair statement?
Right. It looks like we will run out by the end of the year, if I can just go on trends that I know of. We can definitely monitor it, but it... that's kind of one of the reasons why I want to bring to your attention, so that maybe we can look for that, because it does look like it will be, it will be an issue for sure.
So is adding a server a Band-Aid?
That would be, that would be the ideal situation. The Band-Aid would be removing thin clients, freeing up disk space, things like that.
So if, so you add the server in, does that buy us another two years?
Even longer, potentially.
Okay.
So you want a SAN typically, you're going to replace every five to seven years. And what we would want to do when we purchase it, if we're going to do it, you know, in my opinion properly, is you usually have two storage bays. Each bay can hold like 12 drives. You fill that all the way up, and then you wait till that gets full, and then you can add the other side. And as technology goes and as drive costs go down, to fill that up, it costs a lot less. So this one's full to capacity. If it wasn't, it might only be like $5,000 to add the storage. But unfortunately, we need a whole new appliance to do it.
So is there anything in your present budget that you can do without and make this decision to go ahead and fix this problem instead of dealing with it off and on all year long?
Right.
Because you have, not that this is a minor problem, but I think you have, the two of you, have quite bigger fish to fry that to be focused on a $25,000 fix in the back of your mind when, it'll go down, trust me, at the worst time. Okay?
Right.
It will. You know that, you're in IT. It always goes down at the worst time.
Partly during testing.
And...
It's balance testing.
Of course, of course. And so if the recommendation is that, you know, and this is an administrative thing, I think you guys can figure that out. I mean, the money is in the budget for the IT. If you guys have to redirect to solving a storage place, that's fine. And then as you get to the end, you're having an issue, we always go back to our BA, and he finds money for us. It's amazing.
Why was I in my shock there? If I may, Mr. Chair, just to supplement this discussion a little bit, Director Pelletier has spent a good deal of time, you know, he mentions, he's only been here a short period of time, but he's met some pretty stiff challenges in the short, in that two-month period. And a lot of it has evolved around equipment, software licenses, and other IT-related issues that weren't necessarily appropriated in this year's budget. He came on board with us July 1, and probably has handled enough of his budget over ten, seasoned, 10-year veteran. We've thrown a lot at him. So he and I, along with the superintendent, have had a fair amount of discussion. And in my BA report, I will address a piece of the funding issue of that, knowing that Mr. York was going to go in that direction because the BA always has that football. There are some funds that I think we as a district can address and should address to be pointed in the direction of, to assist and give some relief to an IT budget that already in a two-month period is stretched. And for us to ask Director Pelletier right at this moment to go find that money in his budget, he and I spent a fair amount of time, and I think it's with good confidence that I can say that he won't find it. It's not there.
All right.
It is not there. But there are other funding sources, which I will defer to my report. I'll make Director Pelletier and Mr. and wait in anticipation of where that money's going to come from.
The $20,000 to $25,000, it gives you a new appliance and then a couple of drives in it?
Right. So typically, it'll be the appliance you can put 24 drives in. So each logical, each lun, you could do up to 12 drives. So what we would do is we would just do half-capacity on that, just knowing that if we need to...
Or six drives?
12 drives.
Oh, 12.
And then, yeah, 12 and 12, yeah. And then, because that's kind of the tough thing, is once it's filled up, you can't do anything with it. It's done.
How big are those drives that you put in?
Right now, well, that's kind of one of the things, right now, we only have 300-gig drives in there. So what we would probably be putting in is probably in the realm of 750 or 1 terabyte, but we have to look at the cost.
Would it be cheaper to remove the 300-gig ones, the existing appliance, and put terabyte ones in?
Right. So we looked at doing that, and it would be a, we would also need to appropriate it a whole. Yeah, we'd have to get another device that we can offload that onto, then we'd have to redo the whole infrastructure to do that. So potential for data loss is high, then still there's equipment that we'd have to purchase on top of that, and that's still pretty expensive stuff on top of that, too.
So piggybacking on that, since you would need another device, if you did do the other device, this one, and you did go with a terabyte drive... if you did do the other device, this one, and you did go with the terabyte drives, would you begin to pull the stuff off three-hundred-gig drives where you could then upgrade those to one-terabyte drives now that you, since you would have two? Not right away, I understand that may not, maybe it's a next summer project or something like that.
Sure, sure.
But would that be the mindset on that?
There is a lot of options to, that we can do once you have that. So, that is a good point, because the sand, it's not that old, it's only a year and a half. So, that is, if you have both of that, and if you wanna, if we get to the point where we need to expand even more on top of that, that is a good option, we could take that out and migrate everything from there.
And how do the other two schools look for their storage space?
Yeah, so, good point. They are in better condition than GMS, but we are still, it's a similar scenario there. So, you know, the high school's got like nine-hundred gigs free and we can still do some cleanup there. And then LMS has like around seven-hundred-and-fifty gigs free, again, we can do some cleanup there. We're not at that, you know, breaking point right now. But looking at next year, it will become a concern.
Does each storage setup need to be at each school for speed, or can it be at central location?
Right, so it should be at each one. Right now, we only have a fifty-meg link between the schools, and some of these sands are connected between one gig or ten gig. So, at fifty meg, it just wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't work at all unfortunately.
GMS would be not doing well on their computing, teaching, on their testing.
I was just being concerned with the teachers. We installed a lot of the smart boards or the smart board-like systems over the summertime. So, once they all get into their classrooms and start downloading programs to use as technology for, I think you're gonna eat through what's left on those hard drives pretty quickly.
Right, yeah, and that's the most likely scenario.
But you'll have a better picture, like you said, in a couple of weeks, once they clean up a little bit.
They're gonna have a crash in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, hopefully that picture is in blank screens.
I think he's being awfully generous, but I'm telling you, he's headed to a crash.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I can give you those reports of what we're looking at for storage on there, if you'd like those. But yeah, typically, first couple of months of school, that's the heaviest time for that content creation. And a few hundred gigs is not unlikely.
I think you've convinced us, so we'll just get away with a Frank's report.
So, we have the, I was smiling, I remember CHS and... I think we have money in IT.
We have an IT, those E-funds, whatever they're called?
No, I think we have an IT, similar to...
Oh, I don't think so.
No, no, you don't. Capital reserve account?
Yeah.
No.
Isn't a server a capital expense though?
Special led maintenance.
Server is a capital expense, it sounds like a capital expense.
It's a good try, Mr. York.
I was just backing up Derek, wait a minute. It's all your definition of capital expense, I think, definitely sounds like capital to me.
Do you have anything else, Jason? As far as that matters, no, thank you for hearing me.
And I just wanted to give everyone an update on Infinite Campus. So far, we are, well, we're still in the process of conversion, data conversion. We have met all of their deadlines. I can't say the same the other way around. That we, their last deadline was pushed back ten days, so obviously that pushes everything back, makes our timeframe much narrower. However, that being said, on the first day of school, our staff will have access to Infinite Campus. They will be able to see student demographics, they will be able to take attendance. If necessary, they will even be able to put in discipline. What the teachers will not, I cannot guarantee that a teacher will be able to have their gradebook ready to put in assignments and to put in grades on day one. Teachers will be able to see demographics and be able to take attendance though. The gradebook issue, I am trying to resolve now. It was something that Infinite Campus did not understand our needs, in particular at the high school. So, we've talked about it, we've come up with ways to go, we're in that process. The parent portal, I do not want to open until I am confident that our data is clean. So, on that, within that first week of school, when our teachers send home the typical printouts of, here are your, here's what we have on record for your name, address, your contacts. Once we get that back and make sure that, yes, our data has been converted cleanly, and as soon as I know that our teacher gradebooks are up and running and that they are calculating grades correctly, then I would advise opening the portal. And I would even like to roll that out on a level-by-level basis, perhaps the high school first, then the middle school, and then the elementary.
Well, Andrea, on behalf of myself on the school board, I know that we may not have dealt you the most fairest of hands when you came on board July first. But I want you to know, I do appreciate the hard effort of both of you, especially yourself in dealing with all that data for our fifteen-hundred-plus students.
But I think as Andrea said, it's like six months' worth of work, something like that, two months.
Yeah. And the key was that, there were a lot of things going on, but this was one of them that we had dragged our feet long enough on. And to wait another year didn't make sense. But at the same time, we sort of knew that it was going to be very taxing for the IT department, a little rough start beginning of the school year. So, what you're saying, I don't think is unexpected, at least to the school board. I think that by the time November rolls around and we're through this process, everybody I think will be very pleased with the new process. And while some of us will remember the battle days of summer, I think in the forefront, it'll be a well-received program that the community, the parents, the teachers, and students will believe was worth all the hard effort that you guys put in for us this year.
Absolutely.
So, I do want you to know, I do appreciate that.
And just because the term "parent portal" may be new to some parents, could you perhaps give us a little bit more definition of what that really means, or Jason?
So, the parent portal is a log-on for the parents so that the parents can see what their children are doing, they can see their children's assignments, their grades, their attendance. So, it just kind of gives a live, at-the-moment snapshot of how their children are doing. And it's kind of the, it'll be no surprise as when it's report hard time or the end of the semester, because we will have that open to the parent, will be very transparent, and they can see exactly how their children are doing.
So, basically, this is replacing EdLine, which was a two-week process. So, instead of everything being two weeks in the rear, it's now going to be...
Lifetime.
Lifetime.
Yes.
And, or lifetime as the information is being inputted into it. So, which I think, again, I think that, I think everybody will find that that's very thing now. Does that also, we had to create a twelve-year, what was the thing that they had? We were supposed to, by the state, create a folder for kids as they move through the school.
Oh, portfolio.
Portfolio, is this going to be answering the same, solving that same problem, I believed, or is that another?
That's another discussion. It probably will help in that realm. And as the student information systems become better, they are now starting to add capability of attaching documents that perhaps we could use toward that portfolio. I know that the version of Infinite Campus that we have is the latest and greatest, and it just was recently released, which is, if you've dealt with any kind of technology, you know that's a double-edged sword, it's wonderful to be first, but, okay, what bugs have they not worked out? And I'm a very firm believer of, let me test the system. I, security-wise, would not want anything to get leaked out or to be misdirected, so.
Andrea, can you give us an update? Because I know at the admin meeting, you brought it up as far as, just so everyone knows, high school schedules?
High school schedules are in. However, this was part of the miscommunication. So, there was, right now what we are doing, we are working with, it was a grading setup issue. And in order to rectify that, I actually have to pull out all the schedules that are currently in Infinite Campus. They have to be cleaned, something needs to be done differently with them, as a shortened answer, and pushed back in. Schedules are there, the children have schedules. They will, as a matter of fact, I believe Godens just printed out the high school schedules today. But we could not quickly enough fix all the problems, because there are just so many moving pieces at the same time. There is no way for us to get those schedules printed and mailed out or emailed out. Again, certainly with the email or any of that type of data, to put it through Infinite Campus when I don't know if those emails are accurate, that it's, it was just that culmination of how clean is our data? How, and how to best prioritize things, to make sure parents and children get what they need, as well as to make sure that it is accurate information.
And dilemma with that is, generally, schedules for the high school go out, I believe, August first, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, twenty adjustments would be made, and now it's gonna happen like on the first day of school, so it may be a little...
Kids will be hanging out in the hallway, huh?
Send your apologies and your thanks to Ms. Callahan as well.
Yes, well, she was a little stressed too, which, I can only imagine how she is today, so yes.
Yes.
She was handwriting schedules for five-hundred-and-twenty-two kids.
Yeah, just for the record, they've done your own work, and I really appreciate it. I know there's been a lot of weekends that you've been in front of computers, loading up data. And I know there've been a lot of weekends when other people have been trying to do scheduling. So, we certainly appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much for the record, and you've been just great people, thank you.
And I'll piggyback with John, aside from commending you all for the work you did, apologize for, I guess, the board deciding to push through. But like John said, I think in the long run, it'll definitely pay off for itself. And, yeah, we did drag our feet long enough, and we just have to go straight ahead and get it done. And you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah.
If the board's done with the board chair's permission, I would allow them to go back to work.
Get back to work.
Thank you very much.
But don't you wanna know how Frank's gonna find your money real quick? Or you already know that's where it's coming from?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Frank, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did file with, in the back, a monthly business report. I'll start with the fiscal year 2015 financial audit and keep it brief. The draft audit was completed in the month of August, and we did come in with an assigned surplus or a fund balance, if you will, of around five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. And as you recall, that's pretty close to the projection that I was pretty consistent over the last two, three months, that I thought would be around that five-hundred-thousand-dollar mark. And again, you can see by the numbers as probably given report, the majority of that was in the area of special education, specifically in tuition, transportation, and professional services contracted with outside vendors. I do wanna make a public statement of thanks, as I reported to you in this memorandum. We had a group of seasoned veterans who have gone through many, many audits, and then we also had our newcomers. We had a brand-new chief accountant, we're transitioning our payroll coordinator. So, I did make mention in here, you know, it starts with everyone throughout the entire year, but certainly when it comes to the deliverables with the auditors and a four-day NASH GASH to get all this information to them, you know, anywhere from Holly to Michelle to Ian and Maratti, Hilda Lawrence, Delary, Andrew Hamilton, Chair Vetrone, our school district president, Lynn Battley was involved with this. But I do want a special shout-out to Jody Bellevere, who was retired chief accountant. And she was on, and speeded up, probably for two to three months leading up to. And Jody, being at home, did this on her own. She volunteered hours and hours on the phone with Dan, came in on a number of occasions to guide Dan through the audit process. And as you can see again by the report that I filed, the audit report was, in my three years, the cleanest it's been, and we were able to clear up some deficiencies. There's still a few lingering, you know, report in greater detail to avoid as soon as the report is filed in final form. Food service, food service has an end of fiscal year 2015. We have a restricted fund balance of over a hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. We had operating gain, as you know, in accounting, we don't call them profits or losses, we call them... In this case, we had a gain. We received more money than we had spent out, to the two-hundred-and-forty, two-thousand-two-hundred-sixty dollars. That, again, is attributed to Director Lawrence, your staff, who did a great job. We committed to some initiatives this year, such as cooperative purchasing, utilizing the power of many school districts versus just us. So, there were some things that Hilda instituted this past year that contributed to the overall success, financial success of the food service program. So, again, I will report, in part of my report also, I've asked Director Lawrence to take a look at some of the spend-down. We're getting to the point where typically here, we like food service to have a balance somewhere around three months' carry of operational expenses. So, we're getting close to that number, so there are some things that we could possibly spend on this year to either replace some aging equipment in food service that we haven't had the opportunity to do so in the past years. So, I will report on that at a later point. Fiscal year 2016, not a whole lot to report. We've been spending a lot of money, but operationally hasn't, a whole lot hasn't been going on in the, certainly in food service program, nothing's been going on. I did provide you with a breakdown and detail that I provided in the monthly business reports. One of the audit discussion items we've had was budget transfers that, we are showing you the budget transfers as a board, but the auditors would like for you to take affirmative action and report to accept the budget transfer report filed in the month each month, and they will be real happy with us, so we can drop that hopefully off the 2016 audit report. Give you a quick summary of some of the things that have happened around three campuses with buildings and grounds. GMS, as you can see, we did just again, a quick snapshot of what's going on there. Because two of the biggest areas probably, we paid playground at GMS this summer, and we also had a major asbestos pavement and retalling of the entire cafeteria floor at GMS. That goes into, you know, window replacements, that is an ongoing process, as you know, at GMS. LMS, our highlight success there over the summer was, we did install double-wall piping and the detecting system for the fuel oil tank there, as you recall. We had an issue with that being cited by the DES for non-compliance, and we did not do that this summer. So, we are good to go, if you will, at LMS. And again, CHS, CHS as a typical in a high school is more about bringing it back, because it's so busy for ten months, we, it's less project-based, as you see at GMS and LMS. CHS is trying to recover, and we're building that, it's pretty much gone twenty-four-seven for ten straight months. So, we'll see a lot of things that happen at the CHS and the district, and we'll bring it back. I know, Mr. York, I'm getting to the E-rate. Again, Director Pelletier and I, we kind of challenged ourselves. And the timing of this also had to do with the auditors. If you're unfamiliar with E-rate, E-rate is a credit, if you will, that we receive as a district by participating in the federal program called E-rate. It's to give money back to municipalities, specifically schools, for them to have some money to reinvest in the area of communication technology. The district, as far this goes back, probably about six, eight years ago, made a decision somewhere along the way that all this money that we're receiving back as a credit from E-rate, we would place in an account and wait until we decided who we wanted to spend it. That time has come, obviously, the time has come. The balance of that account right now is around eighty thousand dollars. And it's in our federal funds, it's listed on our balance sheet, and I think I'm saying this deferred revenue. So, we would go forward, and the auditors are on board, because I had a discussion with the auditors. with the auditors, and they are totally on board with the fact their recommendation, if we didn't give them a plan to go ahead and forward and spend it, would be for us to go ahead and spend it, we need to spend it. So the timing of this, I wish I could tell you, it was all my idea, it wasn't. Plazik came on board, we had a discussion, and said it's, it's time to spend down your E-rate funds. So with that, based on your information that you've got, I think the recommendation should be for us to go forward and look to fund out the requested money, not only for Jason to fund on the service, upgrade GMS, but also to take a look at some of the areas where his budget has taken a hit over the, over the past two months. We have hit his budget hard, and probably any other functional area in the district. If we don't give his budget some relief, he's going to have some trouble towards the end of the year as well. So I think, if not the majority of it, we sort of will look at spending a few more.
Do you need a motion to spend?
I think so, I'd like a motion just to...
I want you to need up to $25,000 or $30,000 for the...
I would say for this, for us to take a first look for the service, I think even $25, let's say $30,000. And I'll come back with some additional recommendations on how to spend that money.
We have some conversation that we're going to use some of those funds for Infinite Campus itself, a little while back.
A while back. I think the discussion with the chair was, we use some of that money to fund a half-year salary of the database administrator, to bring that person on forward sooner, I think during the past fiscal year.
Yeah.
Was to bring that person on sooner than later, but it just, we never got to that point. So I think there was a discussion about the E-rate money that's being used.
Then we also have discussion, some of those funds as far as one of the schools' phone systems?
We did, but we were able to find that money for GMS, yeah.
But is an LMS in the same situation?
It's close. We're giving degrees of various, how close we are, and I think the discussion was intended, you know, we couldn't let the server at GMS go. I mean, that's, that would be something that happened on our watch, because we knew about it. And here at LMS and CHS, with the server issue, we may be able to go another year, but again, I think that's on our radar, that if we certainly can't do it through E-rate, we take a long hard look at that funding through, as we get closer to, as a bit to the end of fiscal year, as we have passed, if we have some money, find plans to reappropriate that money over, and get those things taken care of.
Make a motion to spend up to $30,000 of our E-rate fund balance to rectify the storage issue at GMS.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, because I know what happened the last time, that we expended money for our IT. It didn't go well.
I'm telling you that.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
In the last speech, Mr. Chair, if I may, is the infamous budget transfer report, the auditors did pick up on the fact that they, they agreed, yes, we are bringing it to the board. The RSA is clear that the superintendent and I, by board policy, have the ability to approve transfers, but we also are required by a, a report detail on those transfers that we did approve for the board, so that you're aware of it. And what the auditors have suggested, I believe, Michelle was kind enough to pass around that piece, so that that explains it in greater detail, we'd just simply be three folks to acknowledge and motion to accept the budget transfer report on a monthly basis.
Can I make the motion to accept the budget transfer report for, is it August, I assume?
Yes.
For August 2015?
Thank you.
Second.
Want further discussion?
Was there one that you needed approved for last year?
Also?
That you just mentioned? So the auditors would be happy?
No, they're already unhappy about it, sorry, sorry. Actually, we've already given them that one, Mr. York. This is to remedy it, so they're going to be real happy when they come in June and next year.
It looks like this gets us through July and August, right?
Yeah, it does. It was, you can put it as the August report, but it does bring you through July into, into August. I try to bring these as current as I can to...
This will also help you at your budget committee meetings, because, you know, how that was one of their issues, they always would bring up, power money's being transferred around and stuff like that, so.
So you're going to have like a detail on a monthly basis, or as far as money's that we can transfer?
Again, we will share all this information, and I'll let Michelle, again, is kind enough to send it off to, once the board has seen it in the report, the monthly report, she's quick on the phone, till the next morning to get that over to the budget committee.
We have a motion, right?
I made the motion, yeah. I don't know if I want to second it. I second it.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
One final note, just quickly on the, you do have copy of the bus schedules, and again, noting that schedules are down to a nine plus, Luke versus the tenant was due this year. I want to thank my sidekick here, Michelle, she chased down, we are one of three districts that are serviced by first student, and not giving, assuming, but I think Nashville probably got their schedules first, and then my able assistant over here was able to chase them down, get them all posted. So they are on the website, I believe the SE website, are they on the school?
They're posted on every school.
They're everywhere you can think of right now. And again, the route courses change, so folks may want to take a look at it.
Thank you, Frank.
Good, thank you.
Bring us to our attendance, attendance and truancy clarification, which...
Yeah, we, the administrators, myself and Andrea met, and we discussed the attendance, the half-day issue was really, I think, the point of the conversation. And we started out by looking at what is the, you know, the culture, the values of Litchfield in terms of attendance. And certainly at the elementary levels, we want to encourage students to come to school, and we want to be positive about the fact that they're in school, and look at it in a positive side. And we recognize that as kids get older, as they get into the middle and finally into the high school, that attendance becomes a little bit more mandated, a little bit more required, in the sense that those kids are getting ready to go off to college, or military, or work, and attendance is no longer optional at those places. So we had that discussion, and what we came away with it was the idea that we looked at Merrimack, we looked at Londonderry, and we visited Portsmouth because they're using Infinite Campus, so Andrea wanted to take a look at, how does the Portsmouth system use the Infinite Campus in terms of the attendance, the half-day policy? So we had a conversation, we would, we are probably going to come back with a firm recommendation that 120 minutes be the point where if a child has been in school for 120 minutes, they would get a half-day, and that would be a half-day attendance, which is really what the issue is. I know that there is the question around, you know, in a six-hour day, give or take, that's, that's less than half the day, but I think a number of schools have gone to the 120-minute mark because they want to give the principals some flexibility in terms of that policy, and also so that they can reward kids in the elementary schools. So we haven't, we're going to have one more meeting on this, and we're putting things in writing at this point to bring back to you. However, candidly, we need to start the year with a marker for the Infinite Campus that we'll use for the whole year, and I would say at this point in time, the marker will probably be 120 minutes, would determine where we would draw the line, and then certainly, we could not change that for this current year, is my understanding, but we certainly could revisit that and change that going into our next year. So I don't have a, an actual written proposal for you, but that is the nature of the conversation that we had. We probably spent a couple of hours talking about this over the last couple of days. So.
And I know part of the conversation was, as far as the cutoff is 120.
Yep.
And then there was concern that, okay, if the child is in school for 115...
Yes. We also discussed quite candidly the fact that we are a school that wants to reward kids, and we're a school district that wants to try to find the positive that's going on. So if a child's in school for 115, 116, 117 minutes, the idea was that certainly that child could be encouraged to wait for a few minutes, so we certainly would be able to find a way to perhaps give that child 120 minutes and a half-day. I mean, we, the absurd situation would be where a child is in school for 119 minutes and 59 seconds, and we say, no, you didn't make 120 minutes. So we'd like to have a little flexibility on that and be able to say, 120 minutes is our rule. However, there is a little boundary there for kids, and I think that we'd allow the principals and the office staff to kind of work on that boundary without getting absurd. Obviously, if a child's only in school for 50, 60, 70, 80, 90 minutes, that doesn't count. On the other hand, for kids in school for 115 minutes, we certainly want to have a little bit of flexibility.
And the concern would just be how much flexibility in that variance from the 120?
Well, I think we'd have to monitor that. Certainly, we're not trying to encourage a mindset that says that, you know, you can change it significantly from 120, but certainly a variance of plus or minus perhaps 5% or so might be, might be what we had.
So in most cases, at least in the elementary school and the middle school, most of the students that are getting out of school, there's a parent.
Yeah.
Or a guardian of some sort that's picking them up. So it's, it's not like they're signing themselves out of school.
Correct.
And in reality, the only age, the only person that's able to do that would be a senior who's 18 years of old.
Correct.
So the, you know, the, the time of, you know, it's not, you know, the student comes in, and then a student becomes whatever isn't, you know, the early release, you take a look at this, would be someone's getting ill, something occurs at home, or something that, you know, a parent or a guardian, again, is going, in most cases, is going to be a part of that process. Would that not allow the flexibility that you're looking for, other than a, you know, you can use the fast time, but, but again, as with everything that's a fast time, if they use it correctly on student A and incorrectly on student B, we move into that issue. And my, my issue is, we hear all too many times about A and B. Right or wrong, we, and whether or not we always get the factual stories, we, we get the feedback through whatever grapevine there is of these issues. So, you know, my, my encouragement to the administration would be to find a ground that is much more easier for them to be tolerant and correct for the students than intolerant and incorrect for the student, if I'm saying that as carefully as I can.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that equity is served for all students, so we treat all students equally. And that we don't have any kind of treatment where certain students, so to speak, get a disproportional favor. So I think equity is absolutely critical, and I think my own personal view of this, and I really want to have a bigger conversation with my principals, is that younger children certainly a little bit more flexibility, and I think as we get to the junior and senior year, it's only fair that we're a little bit more narrow in our definition, because I think when they get out of high school, wherever they go, well, maybe not some colleges, but if they go to work, or they go in service, or something like that, then flexibility kind of goes out the window many times.
So I guess my question is, what, so if 120 minutes is a half a day?
Right.
What's a full day?
We had talked about that, and the issue came up, is is a full day 240 minutes, or is a full day 280 minutes? We really haven't fully defined that, because the issue that the state is really focusing on right now is a half-day definition. So we really tried to deal with the half-day definition. We also talked a lot about, how many kids do we really have that have an issue with this kind of a thing?
That would be, do we have a problem before we correct?
We, we don't seem to have a major problem. It seems to be a problem, because one child that is, you know, not coming to school and is not being encouraged and things like that, we certainly think that's a problem. But is it a big problem? No.
But that's not a truancy, that's not a half-day, full-day issue, that's a, that's a totally separate truancy issue.
Right.
And that's separate from what we're trying to say.
Correct. But some kids, you know, they get to school late, or they leave early, but, but it's not a problem at Litchfield, to my understanding and discussion with the principals. Their concern is that we focus our policy and our actions on the family, as well as the child, so to be quite honest with you, one of the conversations was about, well, you know, where I really see issues is not because of kids, because they're going on vacations with their families and things like that, and we certainly understand that, you know, that can be abused, but for the most part, we want to really support that whole family in terms of being together. So is it a problem to answer for us? No. It's not a major issue. Do we have some children that certainly don't have the correct direction from their parents or their folks that are taking care of them? Yes, absolutely.
Because I, I remember when we discussed this the last time, we dealt with truancy as an issue under Dr. Cutler, it was about the, it would have been about this week coming up, when it cycled back, because we had a tremendous amount of students. Thirty percent of our student body missed next week. Families on vacation, I mean, literally, the last time we started on a Monday, 30% of the student body was, was missing across all three schools, which, which put every one of those students in a point where if they missed one more day?
Yeah.
They failed the semester, because it was four days. So that was along those lines of, that's what we were trying, and I don't know if we did a very good job of, if you rethink policies, you probably understand, but that was the conversations that were, that we had, that was a concern of that large amount of students that were on vacation with their parents.
Those are absences.
They are absences, and five unexcused, and that's an unexcused absence. It's not an excused absence to be on vacation, as per our policy is.
Correct.
To be on vacation with your family. So if you take a, a week during any other time when school is in, your student is technically has failed that quarter in all classes, and, which is not very student-friendly, but at the same time, is not something that, that we, that you want to encourage. I mean, there's plenty of other blocks of times and, and things like that, so.
And that's one of the reasons we put the school schedule out as soon as we can.
It is, it is.
I would agree with, I agree with you 100% in that statement.
Thank you. Any questions on the manifest? Community forum? All right, what the hell go into non-public? Non-public, RSA 91- A semicolon 311, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person as a public employee matters, which have discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Make a motion?
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now we're non-public.